Being here tonight and the opportunity of those of you who I haven't met yet, I'm Jeff Crane. I do a talk show here on the KBR. And I know what you're thinking. You're thinking, "Man, he's much better looking on the radio than he is on the phone." I get that a lot. But I'm really honored to have been asked to moderate this. And it's such an important election. Our city was alluded to earlier. Scott Gessman alluded to it. I don't remember the name. Right at Crossing. And are we going to remain the community that we've been in the past and still be anchored to that? Or are we going to change and be something different? So it's such an important time. We've seen the left win council seats because they're very organized. And they go out and they get one candidate to run. And they all know who that is for some reason. If we have not been as organized, we've got to do a better job of doing that. But I will say, you know, we now have one of the highest sales tax rates in Colorado. You know, Colorado Springs. I don't know, Pasto County, Colorado Springs. And we need to do a better job of candidate ID and support because the other side does, as I said. We don't even have a viable candidate in council district that's a Republican. And that's a problem. And I hope that this is an opportunity for all of us to be informed on these candidates. So what we're going to do is each candidate is going to get a 30-second opening. And then we're going to go for about 45 minutes. We've got four questions. Two were questions from the club here. And two I chose. So you can probably guess which two of the four questions. And then hopefully we'll have enough time and we can open up for more people in attendance. We're going to get some water so we don't kill y'all. They didn't say they were getting it for me, but they are getting it for you. And that's important. The other thing is we're going to have, we have one mic, so we're going to have to pass that mic down. And I would just ask if you can remember, I do, there's, I don't know a whole lot, but I do know you have to speak loudly into them. I learned that many years ago. So if you could, that would be helpful so everybody can hear you. So with that, again, we've arranged it from District 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6. And so we'll go ahead and start. And we'll go ahead. Right here. We get this, I think around here. Let's do this. There you go.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mike Seager. I'm running for City Council District 1. I was born and raised in Colorado Springs and have lived most of my life in District 5. So although I am a younger candidate, I've gotten to see where this city has gone and where it's headed. Growing up, I went to Ranford High School and then ended up going to the BCCS. I got a bachelor's degree in Communications with a minor in Leadership. And then went on to join the fire service, originally volunteering at Security Fire Department. And currently now working full-time for West Metro Fire. I'm very excited to...
We talked about how excited you are. Your time goes fast. It does. Keep pulling.
Kid, it doesn't matter. It goes this far, we're good.
You can knock over my head, too.
All right.
So I'm Dave Donaldson. I'm a candidate for City Council District 1. My wife and I came here 30 years ago for my first assignment in the Army. We raised our two children here. We started putting down roots when we got here. We knew we loved Colorado Springs. I spent 21 years in the Army. First, I was a Russian linguist in military intelligence. Then I was a Green Beret. I was an 18 Delta SF medic. And on the HALO team, we jumped out of the planes at 30,000 feet. Then I went on to become a physician assistant in the Army. And I've got five seconds. And I did that afterwards also. Thank you. You'll learn more later.
Good evening. My name is David Noblet. I'm a candidate for District 2. Greatly appreciate you inviting us out tonight. I'm a 35-year resident of Colorado Springs. I've lived in District 2 for just short of 30 of those years. I'm deeply concerned with the direction in which our city is going. And I believe that we need to have appropriate fair representations accountable to the constituents. And I'm passionate about making a positive impact in this community throughout the entire city, but also specifically for District 2. So I greatly appreciate your time.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Randy Helms. My decision to run for City Council District 2 is based upon the extension of my service over the last 40 years. And I want to continue to serve our community as I did our nation. I'm a proud graduate of your United States Air Force Academy. And I have over 40 years of leadership and management experience at the commanding officer, at the educator, and charitable leader levels. I'm a proud principled conservative and I believe in physical responsibility. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us all for this great opportunity. My name is Art Glenn. I'm running for City Council District 2. 15 years ago, the military brought my family to be here after traveling the world over, and we decided to make this our home. We were taken at that time by the fact that families were devoted to seeing their kids achieve the state-level success they had achieved in combat. Where neighbors were truly neighbors, but mostly fully recapitulated us, people were genuinely capitated. I'm devoted to returning those values that we love so dear and dear. I ask for your vote.
Hi, everybody. My name is Olivia Lupia. I'm also running in District 3. I am a constitutional conservative, a homeschool graduate, and I represent a new generation of leadership because who better to steward the city into its next era than someone who is representative of that generation? I am just so passionate about getting the opportunity to serve not only my district, but the city as a whole. And believe that as I have gotten to grow for 21 out of the 25 years of life, right in the shadow of Pike's Peak and Shine Mountain, that Colorado Springs is a wonderful place for other families to grow. And I would like to help shepherd that change. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Matt Zellner, candidate for District 5. You know, I grew up in Colorado Springs, and I love this city. And I want to make sure that when I have a family someday, Colorado Springs is not just the great place that I experienced growing up, but is an even better place for my kids and for future generations. And that's why I'm running. I'm hoping to bring my education experience, my work experience, and my life experience to City Council to make some much-needed improvements. Thank you for your consideration, Matt Zellner.
Hi. I'm Mary Elizabeth Thamian. I am running for District 5 as well. I am a small business owner, a wife, a mother, and a member of our community. I have founded charter schools here in Colorado Springs. I have founded charities in Colorado Springs. And I understand that in every step of our day-to-day life, City Council matters. And that is why I'm in this race, and I'm asking for votes in District 5. Thank you.
All right. And thank you. Earlier, I talked about we have District 6 as well. We do not. Darfield Johnson is not here. So we have just heard District 5. So let me start with a first question. And I guess we'll start this to be fair. I won't make you answer all these the first time. We'll start with District 2 on this. So you're the lucky guy, Dave. What is your vision for the city's water distribution system as it relates to growth?
One minute.
One minute. Yes. Sorry about that. One minute.
Part of my concern of how we're going into cities is to make sure that we have responsible growth. We bought in the Southern Delivery System for the Van Nuys Ranch primarily, which is effectively 30,000 acres that we have not fully developed. And to that point, we continue to enlarge the footprint within our community. And that impact cuts all the way across the board from the services that we can provide and obviously the fundamental resources that we're going to be dependent upon to make sure that we can support that growth. So I would make sure and hope that Colorado Springs Utilities is being part of that board thoroughly and understands what the neat part about being a council is actually represented to the constituents, but the fact that we have that accountability to make sure that our citizens realize exactly what the limitations of those resources are. So as our community develops, that we all have a favorable move in the right direction. Trying to access some of the water rights that we currently still have but have not yet tapped will obviously be necessary, but there's a cost associated to that as well. And that should be borne by those coming in.
I had an opportunity to sit down with the utility CEO. And of course, water was one of the major issues. The history of Colorado Springs is really good. Our forefathers did an excellent job of providing water. But that's not going to be the future, of course. The CEO described a 50-year plan here for Colorado, for Colorado Springs in particular. To do that, we've got to increase our number of reservoirs. Right now, we have 25 reservoirs to support our water system. So we've got to increase our reservoirs. We've got to have conservation. We've got to have reuse some of our water. So that's our future. We can do it in conditions with growth. We have to have responsible growth to take that into account. The last thing I want to say is water is a region, is a regional issue. And we have to take that into account with the unincorporated areas around Colorado Springs that are having issues with their wells. Thank you.
So it's interesting that this is the topic. Water is the one thing with limit whether a city can grow or not. And the simple fact is for the last three decades, our aquifer here, the support of Front Range, has been depleted by six inches a year. And the key thing is, as I already mentioned, the 50-year plan that CSU has is spectacular. We get water 27% in counties. What's particularly interesting is Waddle Water, Pike's Peak, and requires a plan not just for City Council, but to work closely with our county commissioners and quite frankly, city planning. We also need to focus on making sure that we do have responsible use of water and reuse of it. Thank you.
The city is growing. Absolutely. We've all seen the effects of that, not just in our water resource, but as a whole. I remember when it took 20 minutes to drive from one area of town to the other, and certainly not this case anymore. That being said, while we are growing and water is certainly a resource that we need to manage with conservation efforts, putting non-pot options into new development, those kinds of things, I also believe that it's vital that we continue to make sure that we have taken care of our citizens that are currently living here before making sure that we have enough of extra vital necessities to our communities to be adding into annexes or new developments and new growths as part of the city. So there is a balance between new growth and catering to and making sure that our citizens are taken care of who live here. There's a lot of infrastructure, particularly downtown, that is having to be completely redone as we're trying to do infill development because the water pipes are so old they don't work. So it's even focusing on those things that are going to help us be able to manage more responsibly and effectively the growth that our city is seeing. Thank you.
So water is one thing that is obviously so important for us. We live in a very arid climate. There's a limited amount of it. And I think we need to really pay attention to how our entire region's growing, not just our city. The county rules have much different ideas in place. They get most of their water from the ground. They have a whole different set of circumstances there. While we in Colorado Springs kind of get stuck with it as the city starts to annex. And so I think we need a ability to start paying attention more in the planning phase and start working with the county board of commissioners to decide if we can find a better way to make these approaches forward so that we can anticipate future needs. We're not just picking up someone's mess and someone's problem down the road. Likewise, on the same planning idea, we need to start thinking about how to minimize our water use. There's new ideas like zero scapeing, you know, you can use rocks in your front yard. We really need to have a grassy area that is very costly. And the more water we use as an entire city, the more we pay as an entire city. Thank you.
I've been having this vision of a whole, whole, complete, meaningful... So water use is something that we need to be responsible with. And part of that is paying attention to what we're annexing from the county. Because when we allow growth prior to annexation, and then we try to come in afterwards there as wells, and the cost to our public utilities is too great, too. So we need to be considering that and concerned with that. The other portion of water use over the next 50 years that we really need to be thinking about is we need to be using whatever water we can, whether that is using gray water to water those ponds and the golf courses like we see outside, or creating systems so that families can water their own gardens with their main water. Those kinds of things. And that is an individual responsibility, but the city should be modeled.
This may date me, but I feel like filled under you.
So as Colorado Springs continues to grow, we are running out of resources, and one of those being water. So I think one of the biggest things for myself is to allow our community to understand how that's going to impact them as we continue to grow. So we need to be responsible for this growth. We need to make sure that we're making sure that we have that resource available when we're creating more subdevelopments and as we continue to grow further. So part of that's going to be making sure that we're utilizing wells to the best of our abilities, making sure that we're efficiently utilizing that water source. In combination with that, as a first responder, I understand that education can make a vast impact on our community, as it has with fire safety. So I think definitely making sure that our constituents and that our community understands the impact of water conservation and collection techniques, I think that we can get them more on board to understand the impact that they personally have. It takes a community, and I think that we just need to get this community completely on board with that.
Okay, so with water, as most of you probably know, but maybe all don't, the City Council also serves as the Board of Directors for CSU, for Colorado Springs Utilities. And so what I've been doing to prepare for that is first, I met with Ron Benjamin, the CEO. I took a tour of Drake Power Plant to get eyes on that and see firsthand what's happening there. I've been reviewing the integrated resources plan for water and the other resources, gas, electricity, and wastewater. And I've been talking with previous and current council members about what we can do. So water, you know, obviously it's a big deal. One thing that everybody in this room can do, and all do, is called demand-side management, right? We can decrease use. And CSU has programs for that, one of which is a tiered water rate structure, right? So if you use more water, you pay a higher rate. That's one effect at play. Another thing is they have rebates for certain items, you know, your shower heads, things like that.
Thank you, Dave. And we'll start with Art Glenn on this question, and we'll go down that way. If elected, what are you going to do to prevent the massive increase in utility costs due to the closing of the Drake Power Plant?
We'll all start with saying that the closing of Drake Power Plant was misguided in its forefront. The simple fact is that we have just seen what's happened down in Texas, that you focus too much on renewable energy and you don't have a motorbike plant. The simple fact is today, we have 100 days of coal here at Drake. And there's been so much focus on trying to close Drake to create a more beautiful downtown, but we're all going to pay it. The argument was that coal was, this was last month, was twice the price of natural gas. Guess what spike we just had? Everybody here is going to pay $23 a month. Which isn't as bad as Texas. But if we're going to pay for it, we need to have a diversified energy source. Fortunately, CSU does have one, including obviously natural gas, that solar, that got to wind turbines, as well, believe it or not, nitro. We're in a good situation based with the U.S.
City Council just approved that hike in your natural gas rates, which when I sat down with the CEO of Colorado Springs Utility, I was assured, "What happened?" And it did. So the question is, what will I do to combat that? I will be an outspoken and strong advocate for any movement that takes us any closer to seeing this huge push towards progressive renewable agendas for no reason other than to say that we have a progressive renewable agenda. So I believe that it's critical to be outspoken, to be advocating and educating about coal. Not many people know that, you know, the vapor that we see coming out of Drake is not smoke, it's water vapor. You know, people aren't educated about that. And I actually had a great conversation with the PR team at CSU, talking about how their public image is not great. So it's things like that, educating the public, informing, and being an outspoken advocate for our rights to have informed transparency and clear understanding of what actually happens in our utilities. Thank you.
So unfortunately, our Drake Power Plant's going away. That's anticipation from some Obama-era regulations that came down. It kind of is what it is, unfortunately. But the important thing is that we prepare for the future. Not many people realize that as Drake is being decommissioned, they're actually putting into place six new natural gas power generation units. Who wants to guess what just happened to us because our natural gas rates are going up from the last very big coal spittle? And what could happen to our electricity production if that happened again, and the rates associated with that? We need to be very, very careful how we approach that. And one solution, I think, we need to keep an eye on our local natural gas supply, whether we put it in storage tanks or not. We also have an actual oil-powered electrical generation plant. And we absolutely need to keep that around during the transition period to renewables because it really plays into the entire plan of diversifying the power generation portfolio to make sure we have a number of options to get us where we need to be. Thank you.
What if we gained if in our quest for sustainability, we actually lose our quality of life? Nothing. And that is what this is. It's a quest for sustainability, and it's because elections matter. And not just elections here at the city level, but we are being mandated to reduce our emissions by 80%. We can't do that. I've torched Drake. You can't tor Drake and find out and not find out that we've been told we have to reduce our emissions by 80%. So this is not a decision at a city level. Now it's just a, how do we handle this mandate from a state government, this mandate from federal governments telling us what to do? So how I will handle that is how I've been handling it for the last 12 years. I will be actively involved in my election process, and I will speak out for candidates who will protect our energy rights.
Unfortunately, this nation is headed towards renewable energy, and that's whether we like it or not. And so we have the opportunity to get ahead of that curve or to get behind. And so although I hate to see Drake be decommissioned ahead of time, I do believe that we should leave it in a state that we could fire it back up if we are able to take better control of these regulations. So hopefully through time, we're able to get back to that. But ultimately, we need to get ahead of the curve. And so through this transition, as I've talked with the CEO of Colorado Springs Utilities, we want to monitor the technology that is out, the technology that is being produced, and make sure that we're buying that at the right time. And so through that, the technology that we need to invest in is storage. And that is with renewable storage as well as gas storage. If we make sure that we have enough storage to weather any kind of storms, or such as the recent winter storms that we've experienced, we might be able to get past that spike in the price of this gas so that we can buy at a lower rate once the storm is over.
All right. So the question is, what can we do to protect ourselves? What will we do to protect ourselves if Drake, when Drake is closed? And two things to remember, we still have Nixon Power Plant, and we still have Firth's Hall. Firth's Hall is hardly ever used. It only comes on one or two days out of the year. So there is an option, right? If we needed to generate more energy from fossil fuels, that's a fallback position. I think after what we've learned with what happened in Texas, even Ron Benjamin may take a second look at how we're purchasing our fuel now. Right now, we fear the spot price. We pay whatever the market dictates. We can purchase contracts for a set price on the fuel, right? So if that happens and it goes to $172, we still have our contract for it. Problem is, I mean, is if the price falls, then you purchase a fuel at a price which is no longer the best. But that may be something to consider in the future. Thank you.
My biggest concern, and I don't know if any of you are actually old as I am, and I know that I look tremendously well for my age, but that being said, even if you've ever had the history of being anxious for something in your life that you've kind of pursued ahead of its time, and typically those don't end up in good results. I believe the fact is that we've made some moves by pressures that were both exterior and interior for the reasons that we shut down Drake. I think what we need to do is slower, while hopefully we've learned from some of these recent events so that we can make some adjustments to either our storage capacities or still be able to maintain the access to coal, which is obviously a greater reduced cost. The process, and the thing that I'm speaking to you about speed, is if we would have waited until the natural time and we'd be planning to decommission Drake, which I believe was originally 28, then 23, there's an incredible amount of technology that's moving forward in different alternate fuels. Some of those fuels and cleaning technologies may have allowed us to retain some of the fuel sources that we choose that are more cost-effective. We need to let time bring the advancements that are going to bring us the results.
The nice thing about being the very last to answer a question is I don't have to repeat it. People say it. It's important to me to explain to, and so that everyone understands, I will be a voice of caution. My work history, especially in the military, tells me I always have to have a backup plan. That's what we do. And when I sat down with the CEO, I asked about these things. What will happen? Number one, I am a real supporter of clean renewable energy. That is our future. Well, guess what does not burn fossil fuel? I'm going to throw this out there. Nuclear energy. It doesn't burn a bit of fossil fuel. Now, it does have some waste management, but I think those are the kinds of things, God gave us a brain, and we need to think through these kinds of things. Backup plan? What if we had turned Drake on just for a little bit during, you know, three weeks ago? How, what would that done to the rates? $23 a month for gas and $7 electricity? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, we'll start this next one with you, Matt. So we'll just keep going. Continued COVID closures. How do we help businesses survive? So recently, Custer County, a tiny county here in Colorado, declared that they removed all restrictions. Will you say businesses should be opened up and government needs to stay out of the way? Is it time to end the mask mandates and capacity limits?
You know, this is America. We're competent people. We're smart people. We can make our own decisions on our own. I think that is something the government really needs to back off of. It's kind of like gun control in a way. The more you make people concerned about what they can't do, the more they want to do it. So these, you know, if it's gun control measures, mask measures, whatever it may be, I don't think they really work, and whether they're effective or not is debatable. Furthermore, you know, the back and forth, I think, is really the most abusive on our businesses. Yes, you're open. No, you're closed. Yes, you're open. It's either going to be or not be. And I think we need to put our foot down and stop getting pushed around because that is the most detrimental. You can't staff a restaurant and then have to let everybody go and expect to have everybody come back. That's not fair, and that's not right. And I think we do need to kind of step up, at least at a local level, and say enough is enough. No more masks. And let the businesses decide what they want to do. Thank you.
I believe in the freedom of choice. I'm a small business owner. I should have been given the opportunity to have my business be open and make responsible choices. That being said, COVID closures are tired. They're hurting our businesses, and more importantly, they're hurting your families. You know, my kids haven't been shopping. So many children come to me in my studio, and they have not seen something without a mask in a year. That hurts our families. That hurts our children. And we need to be considering how to fix that. And the answer is individual responsibility. And I can decide if I feel safe without a mask, and you can decide if you feel safe without a mask. And as a business owner, I understand liability.
And as a business owner, I understand liability. It scares me. Trust me, that's why I have insurance. And I'm making every choice to responsibly protect each one of my customers on a daily basis.
Being a first responder and being a member of a family that has deep-rooted family business ties to this community, I can see multiple aspects of how COVID has affected us all. It's increased a mental health problem that already existed and now it's made exponentially worse because people are being told how to live their lives. So the biggest thing is that we just need to focus on education. We need to focus on best practices, on good research, and that we can put out to the public and let them make their own decisions. We are smart, intellectually human beings, especially here in the city of Colorado Springs. And we deserve to have that autonomy to make our own decisions. So I say allow the people to take calculated risks. That's what life is all about, is calculated risks. So if they want to wear a mask, that's up to them. I think these businesses deserve to be able to thrive and be able to be open and be able to implement the best practices based on the education that's put out.
Jim, can you repeat your phrase, how you phrase it?
Will you say businesses should be open up and government needs to stay out of the way? And is it time to end the mask mandates and capacity limits?
Yes, to all of that. Exactly right there. I'm the conservative choice for District One. And conservatives don't believe in government's one-size-fits-all approach. And that's what we've had with COVID, right? I'm super healthy. I run. I'm going to run the bike speed descent at the end of this year. And I have to follow the same procedures that my mother, who's 82 years old and not so healthy does. So that doesn't make any sense to me. I think it should be our decision. If you feel good and you're feeling, hey, I'm not worried, go to the restaurant, right? Without a mask. So we need to give that responsibility, that freedom back to our citizens and our businesses. To me, this is just another example where government tries to control us, control the situation, and it's ineffective and it causes secondary consequences like the mental health problems with our youth, with kids in schools who aren't going to schools and so they're having mental health problems. Thank you.
Again, I believe this is a direct issue of accountability. El Paso County, the city of Colorado Springs, needs to represent their citizens and the constituents that are in their city. Those decisions need to be on the local and not on the statewide or national level. We need to take a look at the science. But if we're going to apply mask mandates, then we should open things up. If masks makes a difference, then let everybody wear a mask but then tend any businesses you want without a limitation. If separation is what causes or results in positive outcomes, then let's do that. Problem is that we're not consistent, which has been said before. We're not seeing or understanding exactly what the fluctuation is on a day-to-day basis. The fact is that we should be able to make a determination based on local conditions, on how our response should be influenced by the business community so that they're comfortable in making those decisions along with policymakers so that we can open up appropriate for them to make the money that they need to make to support their families and employees while we maintain public safety so that we have a well-represented constituency and business community.
I am keenly aware of what the pandemic and what COVID has done to us in our business community. I absolutely support our small businesses and I love what the city has done for us, what the city council and the mayor's agenda. And I'll talk about it in a little more detail, but the holiday, the sales tax holiday has really helped our small businesses. The idea of the PDP from the federal government. So this is a countrywide thing. I absolutely believe in the free market and letting, I don't believe in mandated masks, but I do believe in letting the restaurants and the order of other businesses decide if they want to have their customers wear masks. This is America and that's what I stand for.
As a lifelong Republican, first thing I would promote, what's taught and learned, was individual responsibility. I believe that every conservative Republican here grew up the same way. The simple fact is COVID has been polemicized. First thing we heard was follow the science. I'm all for following the science. Let's follow the science to the nth degree. Today, we're saying that actually economies are opening up. People have the opportunity to get back and do businesses. We need to open up our businesses, recover people from the catastrophic economic effects that COVID has prevented people to live their lives. We need to get back to being ourselves.
The Constitution gives you the right to life, liberty, and property. These COVID restrictions and the tyrannical overreach of the government at the state and federal and even local level has trampled on all of those God-given unalienable rights. So the very simple answer to a question that really isn't that complex is absolutely. It is not the government's job to mandate whether or not you have to wear a mask. It is not the government's job to mandate whether or not your business can stay open because people have concerns of their own well-being. I'm a firm believer in personal liberty and personal responsibility. That's very clearly laid out in the Constitution. And we either decide are we going to uphold the values upon which our nation, our state, and therefore our local government will build upon? Or are we going to capitulate to a very loud but very small minority who tells us that those rights belong to the government? Not so simple. This is for me. Thank you.
Imagine being me trying to figure out who's got to go next. It's very frustrating. I'm not that smart. Okay, we'll start here with you, Michael. As I mentioned earlier, Colorado Springs now has one of the highest sales tax rates in Colorado. Will you commit that you will not vote to refer any new taxes or fees onto the ballot for the next two years to help citizens and businesses of the city recover from economic damage inflicted on them by government action taken on COVID? Yes or no? And what is your reasoning?
One of the big parts of my platform is not increasing taxes. Absolutely, I mean, as an absolute last resort maybe, but no. For this, absolutely not. Our community is already overburdened by taxes. We're taxed when we make our money. We're taxed when we spend our money. We're taxed for where we live. We're taxed, 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 taxed. And it's not fair. And a lot of this taxing, this taxation goes to programs that we don't, all necessarily agree with. It's not the government's, it's not the government's responsibility to fund absolutely anything and everything. And so if we want to fund some of these things, we need to look for alternative sources such as grants, such as revenue streams that don't impact every single citizen and make it hard for people that are already devastated from this pandemic.
So my answer to that would be first we look for other areas in the budget to get the money. If there's a program that needs to be additionally funded. For me, one of those areas that I would be, I would slow down and look if we have money, is public safety, law enforcement. My brother's a police officer. He's been one for 27 years. He's going to retire next year. So if we need additional funding for something that important, public safety, law enforcement, I don't want to stand up here and swear on a stack of bibles that I'll never agree to that. So in general, my belief is that citizens, families know what to do with their money better than the government does, right? But there are essential responsibilities of city government. To me, those are public safety, infrastructure, support for small business, those three things. So in those circumstances, I may.
No disrespect to the question, but in all honesty, we don't know what's going to happen. Colorado Springs has had an incredible economy that was impacted negatively by the COVID. We've transitioned and sustained ourselves fairly well. But to the point it promised to say, well, I'm not going to raise taxes if something more detrimental even beyond COVID happened. We need to have consideration and latitude to be able to do that. That being said, my concern, and I've made this over a number of times, my concern is how our tax distribution and fee services are currently being applied. We've created millions of dollars of overincentivization to new businesses here coming to this community. When the government gets in the business of picking the winners and losers of who pays the fees and the taxes on the structured system that's intended for everybody to pay their fair share, if those that are coming here are not paying their side, you know who the remnant of that cost is going to be bored by. And it's not going to be the big businesses that are coming here. It's going to be the current residents that are going to end up paying the additional cost that's going to be necessary to run the fundamental services of this government.
So as a principled conservative, I tell you, I'm here for fiscal responsibility, accountability, and fair taxpayer representation. I too can't stand there and make that kind of pledge. What I will pledge is that, and my experience proves it out, I will dig into the budget like you won't believe to be able to find additional areas that can be helped with whatever it is. You know, we may be coming up with tops, trails, open spaces, and parks. That may become an issue. So those kinds of things, public safety has been mentioned. I'm just, I'm a police officer. I absolutely support. I can talk a little bit more about 2A, the stormwater fees. That opened up general funds to be able to hire 120 police officers and 32 firefighters. So that actual re-voting 2A a couple of years ago helps our police officers and firefighters. So it's a little more nuanced than just saying, no, I won't.
To paraphrase Oak and Shig, death by a thousand taxes and fees. That's what we've been experiencing in the last seven years. I believe it is responsibility of elected officials to be fiduciaries of the public's money. It's interesting. It's really easy to spend other people's money when it's not your own. That's what we've been seeing, this has been happening here for years. The end result, of course, is what we know as socialism. I do believe we have a financial responsibility, again, as a steward of our taxpayer money to focus on critical issues, safety and security and infrastructure. Right now, our police forces are under fire nationally. We need to support them more than ever. They are strength of our community and we need to make sure that we support our revenue revenue group.
Both the city of Colorado Springs and the state of Colorado have come out with public statements that said they either met or exceeded their revenue projections for the year 2020. They don't need any more money. So I can stand up here and tell you that I certainly will not advocate for referring any new taxes or fees, fees in particular, because they're taxes in disguise. It's just a way for the government to say, we want your money and we don't have to ask you for it. So yes, it is, there is a lot of complexities in what our fees and our taxes go toward. But certainly tacking up your stormwater fee to then say, oh, we're using it for the general fund so we can hire police officers, that's fantastic. We need police officers. Not under the guise of a stormwater fee, which is not going where you've been told it's going. So again, advocating for transparency, advocating for communication and education about what's really happening and certainly not advocating for giving the government more of your hard-earned money, particularly during a time when that is in no way going to help foster our economic recovery for people who've lost their livelihoods. Thank you.
Two of my biggest goals on this campaign is really to increase transparency and accountability in our government. Transparency needs to begin today. Who knows about the 2C road tax? Probably everybody. Well, 2C was advertised on the ballot as a road tax. And initially, back in, I think it was 2016, we spent about 34% of that money on concrete, going to curbs, gutters, sidewalks, things of that nature. Today, it's approaching almost 50%. So almost half of that money is going out the door. I think that is a huge problem. And these are things that we really need to address and accountability. We need to make sure that we are spending the money that we promised to spend on the things we promised to spend it on. Again, same thing with general funds. A slush bucket of money, I think, is incredibly problematic. We need to be highly specific with describing how we're going to spend the money and what we're going to spend it on. Lastly, the biggest talking point today I haven't heard about is accountability with the developers. We need to make sure that they're paying their fair share for our infrastructure so we don't have to.
The question was actually if I would agree not to raise our sales taxes and fees. And the answer is look at my record. I actually went in 2020 and fought the concept of an additional fee for photographers and gardeners. I'm already advocating against additional taxes and fees. This isn't a new thing for me. It's not a new concept. Furthermore, I have a wealth of experience in finance and budgets and I love delving into them. So when we're talking about how are we going to pay for things? The answer is the money's there. It's just hidden in something. And if we have five less paperclips that make something happen, we're going to make it happen on a budget rather than constantly increasing our budget via taxes or better yet, fees, like increasing parking meters downtown.
All right, now we move into your questions. And I think the best way we'll do this is if you'll raise your hand and we'll call on you and if you'll speak loudly, sorry, can't get this mic to you. And then we're going to go in reverse order now. I'm going to start down there and we'll go this way so you can all get a little change of whisper. So echo in one minute, responses still to apply.
Just before we get into that, I'd like to welcome Commissioner VanderWurt to our meeting tonight and our District Attorney, Michael Allen, and Commissioner Howard Williams. Yes, then you got the real question. Okay. Pardon me? Oh, we got Wayne and we got, yeah.
Wayne, you don't need two introductions. Can you just one good? Polly's husband is a father.
I want to ask the candidates, when we think about the broken Colorado Springs, what's the balance between high-density population as we're experiencing in downtown Colorado Springs and spreading things out so that people have longer distances to drive? And I don't have an answer for that. When I drive downtown and I find all of these apartment houses going up, I look at how congested that is and the density of all of that. And when you live in an apartment house, you're actually living with other people. I mean, the walls that you share becomes your walls and what's going on in there. When you have a house with any distance between houses, you more or less have your own family unit. So tell me, how is it that we balance, how do you envision Colorado Springs balancing cutting down on the years that people have to make to get to their workplace and having a high-density population in confined areas?
Thank you, Sandra.
I think the answer is based on neighborhoods. What works in my neighborhood may not work in your neighborhood. I live near Rustic Hills and I have been a proponent of seeing the city come in and change the zoning so that Rustic Hills North could be revitalized into some kind of an apartment complex, an affordable housing and maybe a small park because in that whole one-mile-square radius, there is not a single park that's not attached to a school, which makes it difficult for families with young children or for older people who would like to walk their dog in the middle of the day. It's a neighborhood-by-neighborhood decision. It is not a one-size-fits-all. The beauty of being able to live in a free society is we get to decide where we want to live. If I want that bigger land or if I want to live in that apartment. And what works for me might not work for you. And so we need to be considering each of our citizens when we're making these decisions and also what our neighborhoods look like and how our neighborhoods want to grow.
To me, it's obvious that we need to increase housing density in Colorado Springs. And while I'm not saying that we need to go infringe on existing property owners' rights, one of the proposals right now through R2 COS is to allow fourplex units in our two areas. So both your neighbors can knock their houses down and build a fourplex on either side of you. That's not something I'm a proponent of. I think that's a horrible idea. Ideas that I do like are ideas such as flex use. So for example, in a high-density area, in a downtown area where there's a new apartment building coming in, they can put businesses right in your same building so that you don't have to go anywhere. And I think we need to really kind of focus our attention on our developments to start bringing in these ideas so that we can have a lot of people in the downtown area that don't need a car. They may not even need a bus to go to work. They can go to work or to go to the market, go to the bars, restaurants, whatever they like to do, right there. And again, it is not a one-size-fits-all, so we have to be cognizant about how we grow. But I think that is one good idea. Thank you.
We need to take care to not compromise the integrity of our existing communities and our existing neighborhoods. So rezoning-
and our existing neighborhoods. So rezoning to shove infill projects into single-family, traditional, single-family unit neighborhoods is not an appropriate way to balance the growth that we're having. We do have areas that are already zoned for multifamily units and/or more dense infill development. So we need to continue to make sure that those are available without encroaching on the communities. I was just speaking with a constituent this week who was so upset about these apartments that had been built and these townhomes that hadn't been built in a neighborhood that has been, since I've lived here, a single-family neighborhood. And now they've got these apartment complexes that are completely modern. They completely clash with the integrity and the ideology and the aesthetic of the neighborhood. So we need to make sure that we are protecting people's rights. I just said, not knocking down, you know, those single-family units to put in fourplexes, and keeping our communities' integrity with their integrity.
Sandra, thank you for the question. It is a complex question, but unfortunately, it's beyond what we can do in one minute. But it's interesting, one of the reasons why I'm running for city council is talking with constituents. And almost to a person, they felt as if the city council was death to their opinions. So the key thing is, yes, we do need to work together. The key word is "work together." City planners need to be accepting of community needs. We do have some areas that can afford some greater density. You know, we've got some great development that's going on downtown and some individual communities. I think in my neighborhood, Ivy Wells is doing a wonderful thing. There's some opportunities there that we can actually make that a new list that people want to come to, and people want to grow. One of the things that we don't have is we don't have high rises. And a big part of that is because of regulatory and legal concerns. And so we need to take a look at it. On city council, I will do just that.
So I support multifamily housing, and here's a reason why. I've lived all over the world, places like India, Germany. I've lived in Washington DC several times. Matt mentioned it, which I absolutely support. To keep our young people and college graduates here, the kind of housing that they want is the kind that Matt mentioned. Business is underneath, apartments, complexes on top. So that's important. We want to become a large city. That's what we are going to do. We're close to 500,000. In several years, we're going to be in the 700,000 range. We're the 39th-largest city in the country. Let's act like a large city. Let's do it properly. And let's provide the housing that our, especially our young people and our recent college graduates want. They want to live in the city. They want to shop in the city. They want less... I know young people who don't even have cars. So let's them look at those things. And the way to do it is to go out, I proposed, we do a study, Washington DC, maybe not LA, but other places that do these kinds of things. Thank you.
It is a complex question. My concern has been that there's been an extraordinary amount of effort that has been put in by both citizens and community leaders, stakeholders and the like, that have developed some really great plans for what they want to see in the development of this community. The frustration that I have in my district and the reason why, one of the reasons I've gotten involved in it is that I continue to see us do the same old thing and expect different results. I look out to the east and to the north of my house, where I used to be on the fringe of the city, and I see this fall of rooftops, but I don't see the other facets that are supposed to be included in the portions of development as we start to develop these sections in these areas of town. We don't have the multimodal transportation models that we have, the internet connectivity that was supposed to be planned. All of the resources that were supposed to be generated and determined by these plans have been summarily dismissed, such as the recent decision to reduce the amount of power planned that came after Plan COS. So if we're going to go to make the effort to make plans that look for the benefit and the best of our community, let's at least adhere to them.
So Sandra, I think in your question, you mentioned two things. One was infill, and the other was new development to the east. And I think the answer is going to require both. We'll have some infill, and we'll have development to the east. What I want to point out is that as a conservative, you know, I believe in conserving things like our neighborhoods. So my allegiance is going to be to the citizens, the neighbors that live in those neighborhoods. And I've heard a lot of concern about that when I've been out campaigning, knocking on doors. My district is District 1. How many people here are from District 1, you know, the northwest part? So there's a project, 2424 Garden of the Gods, which is proposed to be put in right at the end of Garden of the Gods, where you run right into the hillside there. Citizens are very worried about that. They're worried about safety, right? There was Waldo Canyon Fire, and there was evacuation nightmare out of there. My son was spending the night at friend's house in the shadows that night, and they evacuated our house. There's a real interesting story, but I can't tell you.
So it's very complex. As Colorado Springs continues to grow, the great thing about the city is the amenities seem to grow with it. So as far as the commute, some people will suffer longer commutes as we continue to develop further east in different parts of our city. The biggest thing is I think that our infrastructure is overburdened, especially in District 1 and on the west side of the city. So we can't necessarily commit to infill neighborhoods and rezoning changes. There is only changes that are going to overburden that infrastructure that's already struggling. So I think that high-density housing is appropriate if we plan for that infrastructure. So that's going to require that we have the space to implement that. And a lot of that's going to be out east. So a way to combat that is public transportation systems that are more effective, that are more efficient, that are more utilized. And through education of the public of how these systems work, the community may become more of an optimal. So I think the biggest thing is congestion, is public safety, is making sure that we can manage with the resources that we have.
Next question. Bunch of shy Republicans. Never seen it before. Good. No other questions?
Yes. So it's not being super educated on the slogan stuff. If there's two candidates running for the same conservative district, both Republicans versus maybe only one Democrat, is there a concern that the conservative vote would be split into candidates along with Democrats? And does that work?
The question was, is there, if there's two conservatives running in a district, would they split the vote and you would have a Democrat win? I'm sure there is concern in that. How about we just, I'll let you all answer that as quickly as you can.
I'll be happy to do that. Clearly, we are in a situation where it's a transformation of our nation here with Republican Party. We need to be focused on winning elections.
That's right.
And what we need to make sure is that we put forward candidates that are going to grow against Democrats and independents to make sure that we retain the conservative Republican values that we live with. So the answer to your question is yes, but, so we have to distinguish ourselves between each other. And, you know, Dave and I have become friends here, but we're different. We think differently about issues. And, you know, I'll point some of those out. And also, David Geislinger, who's the incumbent in District 2. David Geislinger, you know, he supports things that I'm different about. I'm conservative. He's a little right. He's a nice guy, but he's a little left of center. And also, I support the police. And I know, I know that Dave here supports the fire and the police, too. I think differently. I don't believe in collective bargaining. I believe in paying our first responders higher wages, better benefits. And I think we can do that without collective bargaining. So we have to distinguish ourselves differently from each other. And yes, we are going to split the vote. But again, it's our responsibility to distinguish ourselves from our other brothers and sisters.
I would just encourage you, yes, that it absolutely is a concern. But I think the best that any of us can say to you is that we encourage you to do your due diligence, to educate yourself to the best of your ability about the candidates in your district. Call us, email us. That's what we're here for. We want to answer your questions. I love it when my constituents call me. I love it. I've had some of the most incredible educational conversations with them. And then all we can say is you vote for the candidate, why I'm a constituent, the candidate that most closely reflects your morals and your values, and who you think is going to be the best advocate for the things that they say they will advocate for.
Jeff, can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Oh, some, can you wait just a minute? Some city councils, they have a runoff system. Would you favor just switching the Colorado Springs City Council election into hot two or three have a runoff? Maybe that would help. We have five or six candidates for one office. Maybe narrow it down.
I just want to point out that Bernie Herrman has endorsed me.
I don't even live in your district.
So he endorsed me. Can't take it back. But here's what I want to say about that is, exactly, that's a great point. And really, we should be smarter about maybe running one candidate who's a Republican candidate. And I think Jeff brought that up earlier tonight in his opening remarks. Here's an important issue that will probably come back before city council over the next four years, recreational marijuana. That passed, or it was stopped at the city council level on a five-four vote. Five against referring it to the citizens for a vote. Four thought that was a good idea. The seat that both Mike, Seager, and I are running for, Don Knight, who's the councilman, he's also endorsed me. He was a no vote. He did not want recreational marijuana to get out there and be voted on, so that the moneyed marijuana interest can run a bunch of slick ads about how helpful this will be for our community, how many tax dollars we can raise. I turned down two donations from people associated with that business with medical marijuana in the last 24 hours. Two donations. I said, "No." My opponent that's here tonight, he is for referring that on to the citizens to vote on. So there's a clear distinction between us, and I think it's a critical issue, and one that will come back before city council. Thank you.
Let me let Mike respond on there. So as far as that goes, I wanted to be part of this council because I want to be the voice of my constituents. And so while, especially as a first responder, I'm adamantly against recreational marijuana, I don't believe in it, I am for the people being heard. And so that is a risk that we take. But if we're going to say that we don't want the government to mandate all this stuff, to have overreach, part of the overreach is not letting our constituents speak for what they want. And so I would hope that they make the smart decision. And yes, there could be slick ads, but we have to make sure that we put out education as elected officials, as the government, to let them know, this is why it's a bad idea. So I am for the people, and that's why my slogan is "Your community, your voice." I don't speak for me. I speak for we. And that's the biggest thing for me.
As a candidate in the district that has the hottest race with five of us currently running, you know, there are some very clear distinctions. There may be multiple Republicans from one district. Who has all five county commissioners endorsements? Who has our respected Republican elected officials endorsements? And more importantly, where have we been for the last five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years? Have we been out door knocking for Republican candidates? Have we been out actively involved in our community? Because there is a very clear distinction in each of these races as to who has been involved the whole time versus who is showing up and saying, "I'm a Republican," and hoping to have the vote go with them.
Mr. Herrman, thank you again for your endorsement. As we proceed, and Don Knight has also endorsed me. And I think that's really important, is to make sure that we're in communication with current council members. I'm the only candidate in my district that has two council people endorsing them. So I think that's quite important as well. But as far as doing a runoff election, I think that's cost prohibitive. That is just way too costly. Even to put a ballot measure on, I think it's like $300,000. To repeat that twice for a city council election really doesn't make much sense, unfortunately, from a financial perspective to me. And it is unfortunate to have five candidates. But as it's been said before, you have a nice selection. You have a nice Democrat. You have someone who's ultra-conservative, that's great. You have someone who's kind of in the middle. And the other two people like marijuana, and I don't know what the other guy does. The point is, is you have a nice selection. Do your due diligence and decide who best fits you and your agenda deserve you.
Should we do one more question?
Yes.
All right. Lois?
Thank you, thank you. It's a very important job, and I know that some of you have businesses, some of you have full-time jobs. I want to know if you have time to do this job, if you win.
Is that to everyone?
That would be too, well, I don't want to take you to...
All right. We'll start from three.
Yes, ma'am. So I retired from the United States Air Force, and then I was teaching at National Defense University. I retired from that. Then I came out, moved our family out here. So I married back in the 70s, when I was a candidate at the academy. I fell in, that's when I fell in love with Colorado Springs, and that's when I fell in love with my wife, Donna, here. We were married in a dead chapel. We always wanted to come back. I came back and taught, and then after I retired, we came back to make this our permanent home. I've retired from every formal job I have. I do substitute teach K through 12 in District 20 and 38 now. So that's my love. And I'm a volunteer. I'm on board of directors of a charitable organization, and I'm involved in meeting veteran military organizations. But the only income I have besides my retirement is through substitute teaching, and that's part-time. So the answer to your question is, yes, I will devote. Let me just say, four years ago, when the incumbent started to run, I was approached by Larry Fagley, who was at the time. And, yes, ma'am, he endorsed me. Now, he wanted me to run then. I couldn't because I was working full-time, and now I devote. This was my question. Yes, ma'am.
Men conscious decision when I was going to run for city council, or I wanted to make my investment. At least I want to make a investment in my community. I retired from the United States Navy five years ago. I currently work as a defense consultant. Fortunately, we have saved, and we have prepared to make the transition, have decided that I want to make that investment in my community. I will give up my job, my day job, because this is so important to take care of our community.
I swear not trying to test in front of people. My job is a nights and weekends kind of a job. I am a wedding photographer. And most of you know the wedding story typically happen Monday through Friday. So yes, I have plenty of time. In addition to that, you know, I have a family, but my husband is a stay-at-home father, and we have his disability income thanks to the fact that he honorably served in two deployments and is now 100% disabled.
I think this kind of goes back full circle to, can you afford to serve on city council? It pays $6,200 a year. It's gas money for most of us, maybe not even gas money for other districts. For me, right now, my business is very quiet. I'm a real estate, I'm a real estate broker. I own a real estate firm in town. I'm fortunate enough to have other individuals below me to delegate responsibilities to. And I think that's really important. So I'm not just left to beck and call of all my clients. So not only do I have the time, but I'm also financially set to where I don't have to worry about jacking up your tax rate to pay my salary.
I mean, it was put in front of me somewhere as well. If you're going to give me an opportunity, I would say, yes, I can say with certainty, I know for myself personally, I wouldn't have made it this far in the race if I didn't have the time to commit to this job. It is a full-time job, and it is not a full-time pay. So, you know, I think a lot of us have had to figure out how we're going to make that balance work. And I, like I said, for myself, it made no sense to me to make a commitment to my city, to service, if I weren't be able to fulfill that commitment.
Yes, thank you. I'll actually actively retire from being a public servant, services city in Colorado Springs for the last 25 years, to transitioning into my retirement and then obviously serving on city council. I do want to correct one thing to that. Back to you, Randy, love you. The position was in the fact that there is a testament that said that I needed to sue to try to get onto the ballot. I can say with certainty, since I have a city council representative here, there was no suit that was brought towards the city. It was an ask, there was a legal constitutional ask... It was an ask, there was a legal constitutional ask to the city council for permission to change a policy procedures manual. There was no, there was never an active suit or a lawsuit pursuing that. It was simply an ask that was granted by both the city attorney and the city council. So, just to give clarification to the position, but yes, I will be retired to effectively become a candidate, or council.
So, I am a firefighter/paramedic that works a 4896 schedule, which is an amazing schedule. I work two days on, I get four whole days off, with the ability to trade at any time if I need it. I have the resources to be able to be flexible, to be able to work even while I'm at work if we're not on a call. I have the ability to get stuff done. So, what I do provide as the younger candidate is I provide longevity. I provide determination, drive, and energy. I didn't get to do it at the beginning, because I didn't know that my time was just going to go so fast, but I, I have recently finished my master's degree in public administration, which has shown that I've, I've done everything I can to pursue this position, to be a leader in this community, and to be a leader even beyond that. I plan to serve faithfully eight years, and doing everything I can with that drive, determination, and energy to make my commitments, and then to serve and be a proud member of the Republican Party in offices far beyond that. So, that's what I offer, and I hope I can lead your vote.
So, I think I also have longevity, this whole life. I guess I'll be running the ascent this fall, so anybody else who can build, I think, lots of energy, come on out and join me. You know, Don Knight, who's endorsed me, he's talked about this is a full-time job, and it really is. And I am retired from the military, only passed me three-year-long deployments to Iraq, one-year-long deployment to Korea, and six months in Kazakhstan, and some other assorted trips all over the world. But now, I have that nice retirement. I retired as a major. Today, today, there was an opportunity for all the, well, for the four candidates in District 1 to observe Sarah Johnson, the city clerk, as she prepped the machine that's going to count all the ballots. And, and so, I was there. I was, I want to see that. I want to see that for all of you, so that I know how that process works, and I can explain it to anybody who I'm talking to. No one else was there.
Well, thank you. I know we're going to give 30 seconds, right, to each candidate to wrap up, and so, I'm going to start with Olivia, and we'll go this way. I think that's fair.
Well, thank you guys so much for the opportunity to hear from you. You know, again, this is public service. It's about hearing what you guys need, and then seeing how I can best meet those needs as your representative. So, come April 6, I encourage you to break the mold. I encourage you to usher in a new generation of leadership, and I encourage you to vote for a constitutional conservative who loves her city and counts weight to dig into the Harvard Board of Exeter. Thank you so much.
Again, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's been said that all politics are global. This is about as global as you can get. And we, we really need to make sure that we get the Republicans out there, every single Republican registered, to get out the vote here on April 6. I want to highlight my platform, prosperity, attainable housing, I could go into detail in enough time. I am anti-marijuana, first and foremost. I'm also going to talk about our environment, okay, just a second. We need to protect our homes.
Thank you for this evening. It has really been fun. It really has, even though we've done this now as a group several times. I would like to close by saying the vision I have for the city. I really do respect the city council that's there right now, and the mayor's agenda, and I want to be a part of the team. I'm a team player, I've been doing that for 20 years. My experience across the world, I can bring that to the city of Colorado Springs. We chose to live here, and I choose to run for District 2.
Again, I would repeat, thank you for your time this evening. I've lived in my district, like I said, just under 30 years. I love this city. I moved here specifically when I separated my service from the Air Force, moved here to the Air Force Academy. I've raised my family here, my daughter lives here, her family lives here, my grandkids are here. It's amazing that they've gotten as old as they have, and I haven't, in fact, gotten any older myself. That means that I'm passionate about the city, I'm concerned with the direction that it's going. I think we need to do some changes, not for just us, but also for our kids.
So, in closing, I want to talk about endorsements. First, who's not endorsing me? Liberal politicians, the CS Indy, and developers. Who is endorsing me? The current city councilman from District 1, Don Knight. And then, two, our two state senators represent that part of town, Paul Lundin, Larry Liston, Representative Andy Pico, the two county commissioners from that part of town, in fact, all five county commissioners, and the three at-large city councilmen that are still serving. Thank you.
I appreciate all your time tonight. What I offer, as I said just previously, is drive, determination, energy, longevity. I want to be a great leader in the Republican Party, and I want to serve this community to the best of my abilities. I've had the great honor of serving many different communities as a firefighter and a paramedic, and it has been my dream, since being a Colorado native, spending my entire life here, to serve this community. This is home, this will always be home. And although I've had that distinct honor, there's no greater honor that I can think of than serving my own community.
Thank you all for coming tonight, because this is the important thing right here, is coming out and learning about your candidates. Specifically, I want to thank all of the county commissioners for their efforts, and our elected officials, including Representative Landrath, who has endorsed me. When I go to city council, my job will be to represent each person in this room, whether or not you're a member of District 5. And I understand that representation matters, and I understand how to get into a budget and make visibly responsible decisions. I will always answer your questions, even if we don't agree on the agenda. I saw the pen and didn't see that.
Thank you so much for having us all tonight. It's great to really be here. Again, I grew up in Colorado Springs, I have a very long history here. My father was the transportation public works director for the city of Colorado Springs. He spent 30 years here, went to the Air Force Academy. My roots are here, and I want to make sure that the familial roots that I put down are strong ones, and that we have a sustainable future in mind and a sustainable budget. Thank you. Matt Zellman.
Well, thank you to all the candidates. This is a tough thing to do, and so, let's give them all a hand.